Good morning, Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. This morning, our invocation will be delivered by Pastor Rick Owens of Broad Street Missionary Baptist Church, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor J T Moore, if he's available. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Good morning to everyone. Let us pray. Eternal and all wise God, the Creator and the Sustainer of all things in heaven and earth, we come now, Father, before your presence with thanksgiving. Indeed, Lord, we invoked your presence today as you are the chief presider of all things in heaven and earth. We seek now, Father, your grace and your providential will today as these city leaders prepare now to go about the discussions and the governance of city business. We pray now, Lord, for each and every council member and each and every district that's represented here today, Father. We pray now, Father, for every associate and every assistant and every ancillary worker, Lord, that has a hand in making this engine go. We ask a prayer now, Lord, even for the chief executive of this city, the mayor's office, and all of his associates and all of the ancillary personnel that makes that office go. Lord God, we ask you now to be able to make the rough places smooth here today and make the crooked places straight, Father, before we realize, Lord, that we are just stewards over these your resources because your word declares that all of it belongs to you anyway, that the earth belongs to you, that the resources belong to you, and we're just humble instruments, Lord, and we're just stewards that you place, Lord, over the affairs of your earth and this world. Now, Father, we ask you in the blessed name of Jesus, Lord, that you let these words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable in your sight for it is in the matchless and the unparalleled name of Jesus the Christ that we do pray. And counsel, can you say amen? God bless you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could we please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Abbott.
President.
Councilmember Clark.
President.
Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Councilmember Schmittman. Councilmember Tate. Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Good morning. Council President Protem Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Council President O'Quinn.
President, thank you. Counsel, the minutes are not ready for the October 1st, 2024 through November 26th, 2024 meetings. This time, we'll have communications from Mayor Woodfin.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning to the entire council. Good to see everyone this morning. Good morning to the public as well. Hope everyone had a restful Thanksgiving last week. Just as a reminder, due to the holiday trash pickup, I'm going to reshare the amended schedule as it relates to today and tomorrow. Tuesday, December 3rd, which is today, your household trash will actually be picked up tomorrow, December 4th, and there will be no recycling tomorrow. It has been rescheduled for December 11th. Ms. Abbott, that sounds way better than whatever I said last week. Way smoother. In addition to that, the city of Birmingham has transitioned to a new system for its non-emergency emails and notifications. Those wanting to receive timely updates, please text BMREADY to 38276. Again, those wanting to receive timely updates, please text BMREADY to 38276. That's 38276. 888777 is no longer in effect. The city of Birmingham, in partnership with various organizations, will host its Stronger Together World AIDS Day Celebration tomorrow, Wednesday, December 4th. It'll be right here outside of City Hall on Short 20th. Actually, I am very wrong on that location. Let me key the right location. It's actually here at the Bowwell Auditorium, 1930 Reverend Abraham Welch Jr. Boulevard. Again, that's at the Bowwell tomorrow from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Please don't show up out here. Nothing will be out here. There will be impactful panel discussions, giveaways, confidential HIV testing, and much more. Want to invite you all to attend, and please share it with residents in your districts as well. As a reminder, the holiday open at the historic A G Gaston Motel in conjunction with the National Park Service is hosting its inaugural Holiday Harmony Open House this Saturday, December 7th. It is a free event. It is open to the public with special community viewing of the motel. The address is 1510 Fifth Avenue North. The event will take place from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and the lobby and courtyard will be filled with not only local storytellers but performers, vendors, and entrepreneurs as well. And the next day, December 8th, in partnership with the city council, we are excited that we're able to host the tree lighting and holiday block party this Sunday, December 8th. That will be in Short 20th, I promise. There'll be music and much more. The event takes place at, starts at 4:00 p.m., and we will light the tree at 5:30 p.m. And this is a free event open to our, the public and families throughout our community. One last important note. As I talk about this, I would like to ask the delegation with the Birmingham Sister Cities to come forward. Nobody got up yet. In 2023, the city of Birmingham and Welch government signed the Birmingham Wales International Friendship Pact. This pact affirmed our commitment to support one another in fostering global opportunities for collaboration. Recently, a delegation from Birmingham attended a trip to our sister cities, our sister city, Wales. Several are here to share details about their experience, and we are going to start with Ms. Shia Hendricks.
Good morning. My name is Shia Hendricks, and I have the privilege of serving as Board Secretary for Birmingham Sister Cities, a nonprofit organization with a proud 42-year history of fostering global connections to benefit Birmingham and its residents. While we're here to talk about the Wales delegation, I did want to share our mission. Our mission is to connect Birmingham to the world, and our vision is to create international opportunities for all. And since our first Sister City Agreement with Hitachi Japan in 1982, we have worked to strengthen ties across borders. Most recently, as Mayor Woodfin mentioned, we signed the International Friendship Pact with the nation of Wales in September of 2023, marking a significant milestone in our history. We are here today to reflect on our reciprocal visit to Wales, which followed the Welsh's delegation's trip in September of 23. This was a visit not only to commemorate the 60th anniversary of the 16th Street Baptist Church bombing, but to also celebrate the signing of our International Friendship Pact, which a year later, at the invitation of the First Minister of Wales, our delegation traveled to build upon our Friendship Pact's objectives. This reciprocal visit focused on strengthening people-to-people connections, fostering collaboration across arts, healthcare, and laying the groundwork for future partnerships. These efforts are rooted in our shared history of mutual respect and the vision of creating lasting opportunities that benefit both communities. I want to take a moment to recognize the board members and delegates present today who play key roles in this meaningful exchange. Board members Jessica Valentine, Marty Collins, Jennifer Gowers, Demond Treadwell; delegates Lisa McNair, Cornell Wesley, T Marie King, Reverend Arthur Price, and Janice Kelsey. Making sure I didn't miss anyone. With the tremendous support of the mayor's office and council, this visit was made possible, and we thank you for your dedication to this mission. As I mentioned, our vision is to create international opportunity for all. And as I close, I'd also like to take the opportunity to invite you all to join us for the inaugural International Dual Enrollment Academy graduation, which is on December 11th, and Demond has some invitations. Now, it is my pleasure to hand the floor to Cornell Wesley, who will share some reflection.
Good morning. Okay, my name is Cornell Wesley. I proudly serve as the Director for the Department of Innovation and Economic Opportunity. What an amazing experience this was for us to take this team of giants across the pond in a cultural as well as economic exchange. Couple major points from my perspective is that Sister Cities is an organization that can truly be leveraged for further international growth for our community as well as economic development as we pursue foreign direct investment for our citizens. What we experienced there was not just a cultural exchange, but also an economic one. The cultural exchange and hearing the stories, even as a Birminghamian, hearing it live from the mouths of these individuals was something that was truly transformative for me. And I might add, if I take a personal point of privilege, it was the first time I actually heard my own aunt's story, who is here standing with me. Janice Wesley Kelsey had never heard it out of her own mouth, had never known that she was jailed as a kid for four days. And to hear it and to see the room, not a dry eye in the room, listening to all of these experiences was truly transformative for me. And then finally, I also want to acknowledge our deputy director, Coryate Hauser, who was amazing there as well as we divided amongst different tracks, both, again, cultural as well as economic. The collisions that took place at the university level, there was truly amazing opportunity for us to even deepen that relationship. Last point of privilege is that the First Minister of Wales, the current First Minister is the first woman to be elected as the First Minister. The previous First Minister was the first person of color to be elected as the First Minister. We had an opportunity to interact with both of them, and they were both active. We also had an opportunity to meet the Welsh police officers, who will be coming to Birmingham for the World Police and Fire Games, and they are excited about being able to experience Birmingham in real time. So I also would like to present something to Mayor Woodfin from the First Ministers of Wales. This is what they call the Welsh Love Spoon. Now, this is from them, not from me. So when I read this, I want you to know that this is from them. This is not from me. The English-speaking term to go spooning is almost certainly derived from this old Welsh custom. Some people believe that the love spoon represented an early form of an engagement ring, whilst others believe the presentation and the acceptance of the spoon was a request and confirmation that a courtship was about to start. The Welsh government is proud to court you, Mayor Woodfin, and presents you with this spoon in hopes that we can continue to deepen that relationship and have an everlasting impact for both communities. Thank you.
I'm going to put my love spoon back in the box. I turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you.
I apologize. I had a few more remarks.
Good morning, y'all. So good to see you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us here this morning. My name is Lisa McNair, and I had the privilege of being with the delegation as part of the cultural track. And many of you know the story of my sister being killed in the bombing in 1963. Well, when I was born and I learned about this, I was always so curious about the people of Wales and wanted to thank them. So this was a answer to prayer, a bucket list thing, to be able to go and see the people. I got to meet the Petz sons, who was John Petz, the guy who made the stained glass window at 16th Street, and meet his sons, who remember their dad making it, and meet their children. And they had water near where they lived, and they gave us all a seashell, which I'm wearing today, from that to remember them by, and I will never forget them. We got to see the Betty Campbell statue. She was a civil rights worker in that area and got to learn her story, someone I didn't even know about. So that was just quite amazing. Sarah Collins Rudolph, who was the fifth girl, made the paper while she was there in the Western Mail. So we were very glad that she did that, and I enjoy, I always enjoy hanging with Sarah. She's delightful. If y'all hadn't met her, y'all need to meet Sarah and George. And I just want to say thank you all for giving us, giving me this opportunity, and my sister Kim, to say thank to people all across the pond who didn't know us but felt our hurt and felt our pain and wanted to show us some love many, many years ago. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for the continued relationship, you know, of Birmingham Sister Cities. You know, this is an important organization for the city. Birmingham has had an impact on the world, and you guys, you know, helped to carry that story forward and remind us, you know, by bringing back the stories of encountering, you know, those individuals elsewhere. And, you know, even beyond that, you know, educating the youth of today about Birmingham's relationships with cities across the world. And that's a very important perspective to have, especially, you know, in today's environment where we want our, you know, our, the kids of today to have access to, you know, as many opportunities as possible. And that means, you know, thinking globally and not just in the context of your local environment. So thank you for, you know, continuing the work and supporting this organization and for all the contributions you make to the city of Birmingham and the people that live here.
Mr. President and Council, that concludes the mayor's report. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Mayor Woodfin. At this time, without objection, we'll pause for a presentation from Council Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just real quick, we have some special guests joining us today. I want to ask the government class from Huffin Middle School to stand up. Stand up. If you can't tell which ones they are, you can tell now. And their teacher, Mr. Finley, I don't, if you wanted to come up and say a few words, but they'll be just joining us at City Hall for half a day. They may try to stretch it out, but they're going to be around a while today watching us, and then we'll have some conversation after the meeting. But I want to invite their instructor, Mr. Finley, to share some words. So go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Woods. Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Mr. Finley. I come from Huffin Middle School, and I would like to introduce some of the brightest minds of the class of 2030 of Huffin Middle School. We're here as a part of a bigger lesson in understanding local government. We've already gone on the federal government. We're all ready to go on over state government, and I felt that the students could learn more if they witness it at work. And I couldn't think of a better city than Birmingham, than where they stay and where they live and learn. And that's it. I apologize. This is my first field trip, so I'm extremely nervous. I want to make sure that this is an extremely good experience for them because they're worth it. They need to see the potential. They need to see themselves in your places. And I can't think of a better class to do it in, seventh grade in middle school, where you're trying to express themselves, trying to find their own way in this world. And you all have exceptionally done that, and I can't think of better role models to show to them. So I would like to express my extreme gratitude to you and also Ms. Amanda Plain because none of this would be possible without her. So thank you. And class, we thank you as well.
Thank you. Well, we're certainly glad to have you, and I know Council Woods is going to fill you guys in on how all of this works. Pretty much follow the same protocol every week. But if you, you know, don't have, you know, the background information or the context to understand it, it may seem a little daunting, but it's pretty, pretty, pretty easy to understand once you have that background information. So glad to have you with us. All right. Mr. Clerk, do we have any announcements for boards and agency expirations?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll read our statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the items be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read, and all public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clerk, at this time, could we read through the items on our consent agenda?
Our consent agenda for today starts on page two with items three and four. Page three, we have items five, six, seven, eight, and nine on consent. Skip over to page 10. Items 11, I'm sorry, and 12 are on consent. Page 11. Items 13, 14, and 15 are on consent. There has been a request to withdraw item number 16. Page 12. Items 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22 are on consent. Page 13. Items 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, and 28 are on consent. Page 14. Items 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, and 34 are on consent. Page 15. Items 35, 36, 37, 38, and 39 are on consent. Item 16, I mean, page 16, I'm sorry. Items 40 and 41 are on consent. Page 17. Items 42, 43, 44, and 45 are on consent. Page 18. Items 46, 47, 48, 49, and 50 are on consent. And page 19, we conclude with item number 51, and you have one addendum item travel. Page would be 52, item 52.
Do any members of the council wish to add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. May we add item number 52 to consent? It's the addendum item.
52, the addendum item. All right. 52 is added to consent. Any others? Councilor Abbott.
Yes. Item 11 on page 10, I'd like to remove it from consent. It has some errors in it. We need to correct the dollar amounts.
Okay.
And I can either do that now, and we can put it back on consent, or just do it when the time comes.
Yeah, let's just remove it. Yeah. Okay. Yes.
Okay, there's also a request to remove item 14.
To withdraw it or remove it?
Withdraw.
Withdraw. Okay. 14. All right. We have several items marked as public hearings that are also currently on the consent agenda. Do any members of the public wish to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? Seeing none. We're ready for a motion on the consent agenda. Councilor Clark and Alexander. Ready for the vote?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
All right. The consent agenda is approved. First item, please.
First item should be item number one. Item one, a resolution relative to the application of Privilege Incorporated for a lounge retail liquor class license, one license, to be used at Privilege 2312 First Avenue, North, Birmingham in the hearing of all interested parties. Motion, please.
So moved. So, Quinn and Moore, items for us, discussion? Councilor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw item one for, I'm asking for a one-week delay on the item, please.
Only need a request. We don't need a motion on it if the council acquiesces to it, we're fine. We don't need a motion on it if the council is okay with it.
Okay.
Just announce it. Withdrawn.
Councilmore.
Was there a reason why?
He needs to make some adjustments to his safety plan.
Okay.
All right.
Item two. Item two, a resolution relative to the application of Cafe I Z L L C for a special events license 140 to be used at Art Blind Gala 2025 February 1st, 2025 at 2006th Avenue South, First and Second Floor, Birmingham in the hearing of all parties. Motion, please.
I move approval.
Item is before you.
All right. That was Abbott and Moore. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
All right.
And it looks like we're going to item number 10. This is on page 10. An ordinance to repeal Title 12 Licensing and Regulations, Chapter 14 Peddlers and Solicitors, Article C Mobile Food Service Temporary Vendors of the General Code of the City of Birmingham, replacing with a new title, 12 Licensing and Regulations, Chapter 14 Peddlers and Solicitors, Article C Mobile Food Vendors, to further provide for the permitting and operation of mobile food vendors in the city of Birmingham. This is the second reading. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
Item is before you.
Okay. All right. Counselors, questions? Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to understand how we'll roll this out in effective dates and so forth. I don't recall from reading the information provided by Julie Bernard. the information provided by Julie Bernard.
Attorney Bernard should be on her way down.
Good morning.
Good morning. Apologize. Just Julie Bernard served as a Assistant City Attorney in the Office of City Attorney.
Thank you, Attorney Bernard, for the information you provided. Just wanted to get a sense of how it rolls out and effective dates and notifications and that kind of stuff.
Okay, so we're talking, we are on the food truck ordinance. I apologize. A member of the mayor's staff was talking with me. I didn't hear. We were, we were on a subject and we, I did not hear. I apologize for that. Yes, that's in probably, um, the, the staff from BDOT would be good to help, you know, with how that will be. Uh, they have been working and talking with food truck owners to get them to understand what the process is, but we want to have the new process in place at the first of the year, so.
Okay, so it gives us basically a month to communicate with everyone. Will it, will there be something in the license renewal process that, like, will they get a sheet or something? I'm just wondering.
I will let, yeah, the, there's not really a change in the business licenses. This is just in the permitting process. So the business licenses will stay the same. Uh, as I said, they've been working to prepare, um, the people and it's, it's not a huge change, um, but it, it does shift. It makes, it streamlines the process more where before it had to go to a committee, which I believe has not really been meeting for quite some time, and then was supposed to come to the council for approval. And, you know, there was a lot of things that slowed the process down. So this streamlines it. This allows the, uh, the application has not really changed that much. Um, but it streamlines it and allows administrative staff to review the permit application, make a decision. If they did decide to deny the application, then the person, the applicant, has the right to appeal to the council. But otherwise, it's to make a move.
So I understand the changes and I think, you know, it's time to update it for sure.
Right.
So that's, it's more like, how do you let everybody know?
Okay, I'm gonna defer, I'm gonna defer to the staff that's handling that.
Especially by January. If, if the enforcement of it will start in January, do people, the permit renewal is on the anniversary date or?
It's with the first of the year.
It's the first of the year for the permit renewal. Okay, so that's a good time to communicate with people.
Yeah, it, it's the first of the year. It's an annual license, um, and as I said, they have been communicating. There's really, in fact, some of the things that should have been enforced were, that were really not being effective. Like the having the designated spaces on the street, that was another of the big slowdowns. And really, everything that was put in place back in 2014 never really fully came to fruition, or if it was there, like the rotation system, the computer, all of that never really functioned properly or had ceased to function. So it's eliminating that. It, it's really not something that the food trucks are gonna see a big issue with changes in enforcement or anything. But I will let them speak to how they're handling the rollout.
Yeah, so let's pack up for a second and have Director Fowler, um, come and tell us what this is all about, especially because we have the Houghman Middle School students here. You know, they were probably at some point, you know, bought a taco or a hot dog or something from a food truck. So the city regulates, you know, that, um, all those trucks that you may do that with. And, um, we're kind of overhauling the ordinance, or we are overhauling the ordinance that regulates those food trucks. So Director Fowler, can you come provide a brief overview or?
So, so thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Council, for your question. As I've shared, Mr. President, um, under James Fowler's team, the Department of Transportation, Paige Ishmael, has led this, um, project and this process. Mr. President, if it's okay with you and the council, if Ms. Ishmael can come up along with Mr. Fowler to explain in detail. Please note as well that I believe it is birminghamal.gov/foodtruck. If it is the pleasure of this council, um, and if this is approved today, all these changes will be made and updated on that website for you, for our seventh graders here, for the entire city, for those food truck owners, and for everyone else to get additional detail of what's included today. But with that, we present Ms. Ishmael.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Paige Ishmael. I serve as senior planner for the Department of Transportation, and I also process all of the food truck permits for our department. So, uh, this has been a long time coming. We've been working on these changes for about the last two years. So as Attorney Bernard mentioned, the last ordinance was in 2014. So we're at the 10-year mark, and the landscape of food trucks in our city has changed dramatically. From the start of the process that was set up in the current ordinance, it was a very long process to get a permit for a food truck. In the first two years, we only saw about five to 10 permits that were issued. And since then, this morning, I checked our number of applications for this year is 192. So it's quite a dramatic change. Um, so we have been working extensively with our food truck owners, our local businesses, our merchants associations, and then internally with IO, finance, PEP, uh, the city clerk, OCA, of course, BPD, and our fire inspectors to really come together and streamline this process for our food truck owners so we can get a faster process for them and really cater to, uh, this business enterprise within our city. So one of the main changes is that timeline. So, um, going from a two- to three-month process where, um, someone had to come to us with a designated location within the city of Birmingham to operate, that had to go through the Mobile Food Vendor Committee, then that had to go through the Public Safety Committee within 28 days, so that's one month, and then, um, through city council. So we were really looking at two to three months to get a permit. And, uh, the food truck owners have told us over and over again, like, we find out on a Monday that we have an event in the city of Birmingham on Saturday. So they need to be able to come in and get their permit. So, uh, the way that we have streamlined this, we, um, are telling our, our food truck owners, if you have all your documentation in hand and come to BDOT with that information, we can give you a permit within 48 hours now. So one of the main, that, that really is the main change. And the other main change is going from designated food truck spaces within the city to opening that up to all of our metered right-of-way parking spaces. I just want to emphasize the caveat that they still need to pay the metered spaces, just like other vehicles. And they also have to abide by all the same restrictions that are in the current ordinance. So they must be outside of the 150-foot distance from brick-and-mortar restaurants. They cannot commit public safety violations. We can't block entrances and exits and crosswalks and fire hydrants and, um, you know, all those good things, bike lanes. Otherwise, they are welcome to conduct business on, in our city rights ways with a, with a permit and a business license. Um, and the other, uh, the last main change is that we are requiring a fire inspection from the city of Birmingham before the fire inspection was rolled into the Jefferson County Department of Health permit. Uh, but we've since learned that Jefferson County allows fire inspections from other counties and other cities. So with working with our fire department, we learned that we need to have that within our own city department and our own city inspectors. So that will now be a requirement as well. So, so the process is, is really a four-step process now. They have to get that fire inspection, then they have to get their Jefferson County Department of Health permit, then they come to BDOT with those two items. They have to complete our application. They have to sign a conditions form, which outlines everything in the ordinance. So they have to initial next to each line and say they recognize, like, this is how they need to operate, and these are the rules and regulations, and they understand those. And then we need their driver's license and then their certificate of general liability insurance. And then they will get their permit, um, if they pass all those things. And then their, their final step is to go to, um, tax and license to get their business license. Once they get their business license, they will be given a decal, and that decal must be displayed at all times on all food trucks and push carts, and that's to really help with the enforcement piece. So if our fire inspectors are out, um, and our finance inspectors are out, you can know immediately if a truck has been permitted and inspected, um, with all the things that they need. So also, as Attorney Bernard mentioned, we hope, um, to get this ordinance in place by the end of the year so that, um, all, all permits expire on December 31st for food trucks. So everyone will be coming in for renewals starting January 2nd. So we hope to have this in place January 2nd. And we have, like, in all these meetings with the food truck owners, we've made them an integral part of the process. So we hope that most of them already know the changes that are coming. And we've started to implement these really, like, the last four months. So any food truck that has come, um, I mean, we haven't, we're just implementing the process over the last few months to just kind of have this introductory period. So it shouldn't come as a shock to anyone. Um, and we've also aligned our restrictions kind of with other neighboring cities and communities. So, um, it's nothing that, um, is out of the ordinary for the food truck business. So, so far, it's been well received.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, and thank you for your work on this. Um, can you talk a little bit about the process? I, I know you colored, you gave us the steps, but there was a part about alcohol vending in entertainment districts and maybe coordination with the ABC. How, and, and I guess this council would have to approve something with that. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yes. I'm not sure if Attorney Bernard wants to answer. Yeah, she's been more intimately involved on that side.
And does that change liability insurance, like, you know, whatever the baseline requirement is for vending food? Is there a heightened level? Insurance requirements for vending alcohol?
It doesn't change the general requirements that we have for the trucks. I have, that's one question. I have not talked to the ABC board, but generally, anybody who has a retail alcohol license has to have dram shop liability insurance. So that's an ABC requirement, so they would have to have that. Basically, ABC has created a new license, um, category for food trucks. Uh, this was passed for the city of Birmingham a couple of years ago. Then the next year, everybody in the state decided to pass it. Uh, to my understanding, uh, last time I asked the ABC board about it, nobody has applied for this anywhere across the state, but it is in the law, so we, we put it in. So we would have the process. But they would, they would apply, it would be separate from the food truck license, but it's here because it's related. They would apply for that license just like they would any other license, um, starting with Department of Finance. The state law does say that they have to have a certificate or something from the governing body that, uh, you know, that, that the governing body has consented to it, just like we do with other, um, other licenses. So we follow the same track, um, for the alcohol license that any other alcohol license would. They have to tell us where they're gonna be. They have to tell the ABC board where they're gonna be. And in fact, ABC's rule requires that if they're going to vend, um, under this license, which is only allowed in an entertainment district, that they have to tell the ABC board at least seven days before they do so and tell them exactly where they're gonna be. So. Any other questions related to that?
Yes, um, I wanted to know, who is in charge of enforcement?
Who's in charge of enforcement? Well, it's between BDOT and, um, police is on the street.
So how do we know when insurance lapses?
That goes through the clerk's office. It's like the other processes. Um, we've tried to straighten this up a little bit and make it follow some of the language that's in, like, the CPNC ordinance, the taxis, because they are supposed to keep that insurance current and on file with the city clerk. As you know, sometimes you see items that pop up on your agenda that's to, you know, revoke a, a CPNC or some other type of license or permit because they have not filed the required insurance. And the clerk's office, um, you know, manages that. They, the insurance company, they're, they're supposed to be a 30-day notice to the city before it lapses, but the clerk's office also keeps up with when it's gonna expire. And so they send notices to the businesses to say, hey, you're about to expire. Give them about 30 days. And if you don't get us, you know, the current insurance, we will place you on the council agenda for revocation. And that's memorialized, you know, codified in this ordinance. It was not, I don't think it was clear in the prior ordinance for this. So we've made that clear here, and that that's grounds for revocation. And there's a fee. I mean, if they come in with a lot of these cases, sometimes, you know, when, when the count clerk has put them on for revocation because of the insurance, they may come in the morning of with that insurance, and so that will be withdrawn. But, uh, if they don't, and the council goes ahead and revokes, and then they come back like three weeks later and say, oh, well, we had the insurance. We want our permit back, then that will be processed, and there's a fee for them to get their permit back, for us to have to process that and reinstate the permit.
Okay, and I wanted to know, who does the inspection of the actual food truck or push cart? If we have a 48-hour turnaround to get one, so who rushes out and does that inspection?
They have to have gone to the fire department first. That's part of the application process. The 48 hours is from the point that BDOT staff has a complete application. It's, you know, they can't just come in and say, hey, I've got a food truck called this, and I need my permit in 48 hours. No. You have to have all those items for the application together for review, and that's when the 48 hours happens. And the first step in this process is they go to the fire department first for the inspection of the truck. And in the, uh, technical code that the council just adopted, that included a fire permit for mobile food trucks. Now, I think the terms in the National Fire Protection Association's standard is, um, I can't remember the exact word, but, you know, mobile, um, food vending where smoke or grease is produced. So, um, that's always been there. That's always been part of the standard that's been adopted. But this year, the fire department asks you to put a permit with that. So they have to go through and get a fire permit before they ever come to BDOT.
Okay, so fire safety is the only thing we check?
Well, the health department also, they also have to have their health department permit. So we don't, all we're concerned about is that they get the permit and that they follow the rules as to where they locate and operate within the city. But generally, the inspection of the truck, we're not looking at that. That's the health department and the fire department's per view.
Okay, and how many parking places are they allowed to take up on our city streets?
As long as they pay the meters. I'm assuming they, I will let BDOT answer that.
As long as they're compliant with paying the meters and then being outside of that 150-foot rule of the front door of a, the brick-and-mortar restaurant, they're allowed to operate. There is a caveat with the, our fire inspections, um, or our fire, fire inspection staff have let us know that trucks need to be minimally spaced 10 feet apart. So that is a requirement. So you, we couldn't have three trucks like bumper to bumper to bumper on the city streets. Oh, and from other vehicles, right, yes.
Okay, so they can just, like, regular people, there used to be a two-hour limit on parking spaces. Do we still have that? And are these people subject to the same rules as the rest of us? So they can only park there for two hours and then they gotta?
Yes, mhm, if they are parked in that area.
Okay, and last thing, the generators. How many decibels do we allow the generators, uh, of noise do we allow them to make?
Uh, 80 decibels is the maximum. And, um, we have added that as a part of the fire inspection, so they're going to be checking the So they're going to be checking the decibel levels.
Oh, that's good. Yeah, because if we're allowing these people to operate till 2:00 a.m. and they happen to go downtown where people are living, you know, listening to that generator at 2:00 a.m. is not much fun.
Yes, understand.
Well, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Dr. Quinn, have a question?
Yes, Pro Tem Alexandra.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm very glad that my colleagues asked a series of questions that they did because I felt we did need some clarification. The one thing that stuck in my mind was the notification and the awareness for current food truck inspectors. So I'm glad to know that this information is going to be on the landing page. And there's already some collaboration that's been done with them.
Mr. President, it's a matter of Pro Tem point. It's a note here, and I'm resharing some information too. There was a meeting in September that IEL hosted. I'm sorry, two separate things. There was a big meeting with food truck owners back in September. Also, IEL separate from that meeting hosted a separate meeting with food truck owners. And then there will be an additional meeting in January related to food truck vendors and events. All that information, the additional information about the January meeting will be placed on the website as well. It will be communicated in other various communication channels.
Perfect, and also the questions related to the permitting or the amount of time that it was taking someone to get licensed to do this or get the permit to do this. I know that other events that I've been a part of, often it's word of mouth sometimes that people realize something big is going to happen and I need to get out there with my food truck. So I am excited though to know that it's not rushed. There's still this inspection and things happen faster pace once you've met all the fire safety and other type of requirements. So glad to know that. My question relates to, and I just want to be sure I'm clear, on the parking and the number of spaces, is this anything different when there is an event? That is just, is it just the amount of time? I want to bring my food truck and I'm going to put it in a certain location? Or is there any time allowance when there's an event that's going to go more than two hours? How does that work?
Yes, so special events have different regulations, pretty much. So you would work through that event organizer to become a vendor through them, like our Food Truck Fridays. And there, before you arrive to that event, we have our fire inspector spray paint out the designated spaces for you to park so they know that they're reaching their minimum spacing requirements. So that's a completely separate. The right-of-way parking is really just the day-to-day operations.
Perfect, well, I am glad to see these changes because we know that so many of our food truck, the people that are providing this service, they're entrepreneurs and often this can lead, I've seen some very successful ones leading to brick and mortar type establishments that again helps to increase our bottom line, if you want to say, as well as theirs. So just glad to see the collaboration and the effort. I hope this grew out of the fact that you had to go through and look at each one of those and maybe you thought of a good way. And I'm glad that the council were looking at this as an opportunity to again support our small business owners as well as keep things safe and orderly. So thank you. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Did have a question. So this should be streamlining the process, requiring less staff time to review these applications. So are we making any adjustments to the permitting fee?
We are. So currently, as written, the right-of-way permit was $300. And if you wanted to operate in the premier area, which is our central business district, it was $500. We are now offering just one permit, and it doesn't matter where you want to operate, and that permit will be $200.
Okay, all right. Any additional questions? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
All right, that item is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item 11.
Item 11, a resolution authorized the merely execute and deliver an agreement with the Birmingham Board of Education in an amount not to exceed $7,998 to provide the following goods and services for the benefit of students of the following Birmingham City Schools. Number one, the board should coordinate with Glen Iris Elementary School for the amount of $2,666. Epic Elementary School for the amount of $2,666 to assist with school expenses and band supplies. Two, the board should coordinate with Avondale Elementary School for the amount of $2,500 to assist with school expenses. Said funds will come from District 3 district funds. The allocation is exclusively for purposes stated. And to my understanding, there should be corrections.
I move approval.
Second.
With the following changes.
All right, Counselor Abbott.
So from the agreement, Glen Iris Elementary School receives $2,666 for the principal's discretionary fund. Avondale Elementary School receives $2,666 for the principal's discretionary fund. Epic Elementary School receives $2,166 for the principal's discretionary fund and $500 for band supplies. Those are the corrections.
All right, noted. Any further discussion? We're ready for the vote.
Okay, all with the corrected changes, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, that item is approved. Next item, please.
Item 14 was withdrawn, item 16 was withdrawn. So I think that should be for the regular items, I think that's it.
All right. That brings us to our old and new business, Counselor Clark.
Well, District 8 announcements tonight. The Thomas Neighborhood will host their holiday gathering at Mount Hebron Baptist Church Thomas. That's starting at 5:30 p.m. And Counselor Tate and I join the family and friends of Alonso Darrow and residents of Thomas Neighborhood and the North Pratt Community in mourning Mr. Darrow's transition. Thomas Neighborhood is a little hamlet close to the rear entrance of Wade Sand and Gravel. And it sits in District 8 and District 9. And Mr. Darrow served mightily this neighborhood for, I know, at least 23 years as neighborhood president until recently. And during that tenure, he often served as an officer in the North Pratt community. So I'd like to make a motion for UC for a resolution of sympathy for his family.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
And now move the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, say no.
Thank you. Counselor Tate, I don't know if you have anything more you want to say now or later?
No, I just got to know Mr. Darrow during my tenure here as a counselor. And he was very, you know, he stressed his peace and he's concerned about, he's done a lot. He's very active, you know, during the tornado, the Pratt tornado. He, you know, the last conversation I had with him was, you know, he wanted to see some things happen at One Pratt Park. So just got to know him that way. Just really believed in, you know, community and really wanted to see, you know, things flourish, you know, in that six Pratt, those neighborhoods. We want to extend our condolences to him as Counselor Clark, as I already said.
Thank you, Counselor Tate. And also, the Ensley Highlands Neighborhood is going to have its holiday gathering next Monday, that's December 9th, at the Birmingham Police Department's West Precinct. So come sharing the joy of this festive season with your neighbors, my neighbors. I'm sure Counselor Quinn's going to congratulate Parker High School Thundering Herd, so I'm just gonna tee it up. And then the Alabama Symphony Orchestra, this is getting more into arts and culture. The Alabama Symphony Orchestra's debut performance at the Historic Carver Theater will take place on December 5th. They're going to perform Bach's Brandenburg Concerto and somebody's ancient airs and dances. But as a special treat, they're going to also perform the world premiere of Birmingham Concerto Number One, a new work by Alabama native Brian Neighbors. And he performs another genre, so you may have heard of Brian Neighbors. But he's got a classical piece that's going to be performed soon. So if you want to purchase tickets, you can go to alabamasymphony.org/events. Also, on December 11th, from 11:00 to noon, join the Birmingham Museum of Art for What Is Color Theory Anyway? Inspired by the color wheel created by Hayward Oubre, the subject of BMA's current exhibition. This is led by UAB Associate Professor of Printmaking and Computer Graphics, Derek Craco. His talk will change the way you experience color in life, art, and design. Also, on December 13th, you can join the Alabama Jazz Hall of Fame for a special night celebrating our local jazz icon and Ensley native Jose Carr with a screening of a documentary film about his life called So You Say You Play Jazz. The evening begins at 6:00 p.m. with a reception featuring live refreshments, live jazz, and a chance to mingle, followed by the film at 7:00 p.m. This is a celebration, so you don't, that you don't want to miss. So grab your free ticket at jazhall.com/events. And finally, I'd like to wish everyone a wonderful and peaceful start to this holiday season with love, fellowship, and good food. I'd also like to encourage you to use this time with your family to thoughtfully discuss your plans for your family's assets. And I know that's kind of a stretch, but, you know, we don't like to talk about passing things on because it kind of implies that you got to leave the earth realm for that to happen. And it's not a, often a pleasant topic, but it's a very important topic for preserving wealth. And so the holidays are a good time to have those conversations and love. I'll conclude with that.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Fairmount Neighborhood Association will take place tonight at 6:00 p.m. in Mount Carmel Baptist Church. The Engle Nook Neighborhood Association will also take place on Monday, December 9th, at 5:30 at Engle Nook Rec Center. Airport Highlands Neighborhood Association will be meeting December 9th, Monday, at 6:00 p.m. at Pleasant View Baptist Church. And let me see, on Friday, December 6th, the Woodlawn Community Table fundraiser will take place. Groove Into the Holiday will take place at Woodlawn Theater located at 5503 First Avenue North. Doors open at 6:00 p.m. and music starts at 6:30. Enjoy jazzy tunes by The Time Beans, Jose Carr, and The Pizzazz Band, and The Sure Shot. Tickets are on sale at $50. All proceeds will go towards the Woodlawn Community Table. If you want to grab a ticket, please visit the bit.ly/woodlawngroove24. Let me see, the Woodlawn Wonderland Holiday Market and Tree Lighting will take place on Sunday, December 8th, from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. Join us for holiday shopping, hot cocoa, and a visit from Santa, followed by the Woodlawn Tree Lighting Ceremony. I want to say there'll be several different vendors that are there that'll be in attendance. Naughty But Nice Kettle Corn, V's Elegant, Lush Bean, Gigi's Tasty Cakes, Camille's Creations, Dirty Red, Food Truck, which I love. Let me see, Focus On You Cosmetics, Shelley Anne's Kitchen, Trend Blend Creations, Bessie Pies and Things, Princess Carmen Sacred Sanctuary, Dr. Devon Creates, WYL Juices. Okay, so y'all make sure y'all come and check that out. We also have the annual Christmas party for the Engle Nook Neighborhood. Reverend Pastor Webb sends her invite to all the members of the council as well as the mayor for December 12th, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Located at 4016 37th Avenue North, Birmingham, Alabama 35217. And this will be the Engle Nook Neighborhood Spiritual Feast that takes place every year. So I want to support her. Currently, or in 15 minutes, as a matter of fact, Polaris will be hosting the Co-Work With Me. We have Prosper Beham, who will be joining some coworking. Ms. Angela Abdurash Rashid will be there. It says, "Join Prosper for Co-Work With Me." They specialize in fostering inclusive economic strategic communications, community engagement, and partnership development. And so if you are a business owner that would like to learn some of those skills, please check out Polaris at 5521 First Avenue South, Birmingham, Alabama 35212. Next week, for the Co-Work With Me session, that will take place on December 10th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We'll have our very own Ms. Dorothy George with the City of Birmingham, Office of Business Diversity and Opportunity at Polaris for lunch as well. And so definitely check those, those two different events out. And then last but not least, just wanted to give a shout out. There was an article that came out recently about the top 10 most improved schools. And so I-Three Academy Phase 1 Charter School in Birmingham was on that list, as well as Engle Nook School over in the Engle Nook Neighborhood was on that list. And so just want to give a shout out to those students for a job well done. And that concludes my analysis.
All right, thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, December 11th, at 3:30 here in the council chambers. We have three vacancies on the zoning board of adjustment and two vacancies on the Birmingham Planning Commission. And people who are interested should send their resumes by December 12th to valerie.aubett@birminghamal.gov. There are no Neighborhood Association meetings this week, except for Glen Iris last night. It's over. Tonight, the Five Point South Neighborhood will be having their Christmas social at the Hesseger Daniels Mansion on Highland Avenue. And everyone is supposed to bring something to be shared by all of the guests. So that will be fun. And since Ms. Chaffin has sold the building to another entity, we will miss her because she is a very charming hostess and the perfect person for a bed and breakfast. Let's see, if you have any concerns or issues with anything going on in the city aside from police issues, you should call 311 or add the app to your phone. And I know everybody has a phone now, so you can add the 311 app. And then you can add photographs and descriptions of things that you see that need to be fixed. And this is a good mission for anyone who walks in your neighborhood because you see all kinds of things that need to be turned in. And we are continuing to ask residents of District 3 to visit our website for additional information that we don't have time to tell you about in our little three minutes up here. And that is www.bhamdistrict3.com. Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, oh, and one other thing. Every council member and a lot of other people have been invited to meetings about the new open space ordinance changes. And so I attended the one yesterday, but there are three, at least three more. And I would encourage everyone to go to those meetings to find out about this new open space, the new open space changes to the ordinance because overall, I think that they're very good and something that's needed. So just wanted to remind everyone to... So, just wanted to remind everyone to read your emails. This would be from Jess Blankenship in Planning. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Pro Tim Alexander?
Thank you, Mr. President. These are announcements for District Seven. There are no Neighborhood Association meetings scheduled this week in D-seven, but we do have quite a few holiday socials. Thursday, December fifth, the Brownsville Community Holiday Social will be held at twelve PM at the Roosevelt Community Center. Also on Thursday, there will be bulk trash and brush pickup, which is scheduled for Roosevelt City. On Friday, December sixth, the Jones Valley Neighborhood Association will have their holiday social. It will be at three PM at the Powderly Library. Also on Friday, Friday, bulk trash and brush pickup is scheduled for Jermania Park South. On Saturday, December seventh, bulk trash and brush pickup is scheduled for the Powderly Neighborhood. On Monday, December ninth, there'll be, um, mass bulk trash and brush pickup scheduled for Jones Valley, Hillman, Hillman Park, and West Brownsville. So let's get our trash, bulk trash out there and get it picked up. On Saturday, and I'll be talking about this again, on Saturday, December fourteenth, the Southwest Holiday Festival will take place. It will include a parade, as well as, um, several, um, giveaways and holiday fun for the whole family. Again, that's Saturday, December fourteenth, and that'll be at that Hopewell Baptist Church in Hillman Station. And those are my announcements, thank you.
All right, thank you, Council Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are no Neighborhood meetings this month, so the Wyllam Neighborhood Association is having their Christmas Holiday Social tonight at six PM at the Wyllam Library. The Cypico Finley Neighborhood Association will be having their Christmas Social Dinner on Wednesday, December the fourth, five-thirty PM at the Cypico Plant Community Room. Thomas Neighborhood Association Meeting will come, resume back on January the second, twenty-twenty-five. North Birmingham Neighborhood Association will be having their Christmas Holiday Social on next Monday, December the ninth, at four PM at the North Birmingham Library. The next Public Safety Meeting will be held on Tuesday, December the tenth, twenty-twenty-four, at one PM in the council chamber. Chambers, please submit agenda items by email. Wednesday, December the fourth, no later than twelve noon, to patrice dot Collins at Birmingham AL dot gov, Gregory dot Stanley at Birmingham AL dot gov. Also, I want to mention this to you guys as well. Um, the Women in Manufacturing, um, is a program that IEO talked about to us, and they've trained several women in the Women in Manufacturing, um, apprenticeship. So I really want to make sure and ask you guys to share this information with your networks because they're, they're getting ready to start on a second cohort, um, in January, and they're trying to recruit at least fifty women. So, just to give you some snippets, um, with WHAM is, it is a, um, mentorship pro- was an apprenticeship program, um, within, that provides incentives, they provide transportation, childcare assistance, and referrals. And, um, this is a great opportunity for somebody to really, you know, enhance their life and change their, their salaries. So, I will get this flyer, uh, printed out and pass it on along to my colleagues. And can you please share this information with your network and help the WHAM program? This is the Department of Labor, um, granted, they're receiving, Lawson State, uh, is the school that administers this program. So I would be glad to get that information to you guys. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Council Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Want to, once again, celebrate, uh, and thank Mr. Finley and the seventh grade government class from Huffin Middle School for, uh, spending their morning with us. I can tell that there is nowhere that you would rather be this morning, so we're excited to have you right here with us. And, uh, we'll be talking here shortly. Uh, also, the Echo Highlands Neighborhood Association will meet this Thursday at seven PM. That meeting will be held via Zoom. The Kilo Springs, uh, neighborhood invites everybody out, uh, for a volunteer opportunity. They'll be serving at the East Glen Nursing Home, that's on this Saturday at ten AM. Uh, incredible event they do every year. They'll, uh, take donations and things and just spend the day at the nursing home. So if you're available, uh, interested in serving, invite you out. Again, that is this Saturday at ten AM at the East Glen, uh, Nursing Home. And then this year, we got a special guest coming to District One. Uh, will be partnering with the Birmingham Library to host a holiday open house. And we just got word, we got confirmation, Santa Claus will be on site, uh, that's going to be on December tenth, uh, starting at five PM. So, uh, they'll basically have it set up, uh, a lot of, a lot of games and things like that, but you'll be able to take a, uh, picture, family picture, whatever you want to do, uh, take it, get your photo taken with Santa. And so, excited about that. So again, that is going to be on December tenth at five PM at the Springville Road Library. So, uh, if you need to get a picture with Santa, come on out and get that done. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Council Woods. As Council Clark alluded to, um, this week is High School Championship Week in the City of Birmingham at Protective Stadium, and lots of games happening, um, tomorrow through Friday. Um, but of course, we want to highlight, um, A.H. Parker High School, which will be, um, playing Saraland High School, uh, on Friday at, at, at seven PM at Protective Stadium. So, um, I would love to be able to rib, uh, Mayor Rubenstein from Saraland when I see him at, um, the next Alabama League of Municipalities meeting. So, um, I'll, I'll be, definitely be rooting for the Thundering Herd. Our next Transportation and Infrastructure Committee meeting will be held Monday, December ninth, at two PM here in the council chambers. If you have submissions, please forward them to Kimberly dot Phillips at Birmingham AL dot gov. The Wauhoma Neighborhood Association meeting will be this Thursday, December fifth, at six PM at the Southern Museum of Flight. Also want to, um, announce that the City of Birmingham will celebrate World AIDS Day on Wednesday, December fourth, from eleven to two at Battlewell Auditorium. There will be games, music, health screenings, panel discussions, and community partner activations. Um, again, that's at Battlewell Auditorium on Wednesday. The Jones Valley Teaching Farm will be unveiling its community mur- mural on Saturday, December seventh, from noon to two PM at the Center for, Center for Food Education. Um, please join them for activities, farm tours, and light refreshments. Also on Saturday is, uh, the Holiday Harmony Open House at the AG Gaston Motel, um, from ten to two PM. That's, of course, at fifteen-ten Fifth Avenue North, AG Gaston Motel. This will be an opportunity for you to tour the renovated hotel and connect with organizations in the Civil Rights, Rights District. Uh, the mayor mentioned earlier that there will be a City of Birmingham Holiday Block Party, uh, taking place on Sunday, December eighth, at four PM in front of City Hall. Uh, that starts, uh, again, at four PM, the tree lighting will take place at five-thirty. The, in Woodlawn, there's also a, uh, tree lighting on Sunday, December eighth, uh, around the same time. Um, but it runs from noon to, to five PM. That's going to take place on Fifty-Fifth Place South. That's their annual tree lighting. Um, the tree lighting will take place at five-thirty in front of the Woodlawn Transit Center, located across the street from Woodlawn High School. And, uh, lastly, the, the last two market dates for Pepper Place Farmer's Market will take place Saturday, December seventh, and December fourteenth. And that runs from seven AM to noon, rain or shine. That concludes the District Five announcements. We did not have any public speakers who signed up. Uh, Council Clark? Okay, I'll come back. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to just ask, uh, Chief Sparks or, and/or Chief Mitchell, if we could, if you could look into the lighting, um, in that parking area outside of the Five Points West Library, between the, um, Max, I'm sorry, what is it? What's the bus re- the BRT station? It's, there are light poles with light fixtures, but it's so pitch black after five-thirty out there. Um, it's pretty, you know, scary because it's kind of walled off by buildings and it's just really dark.
Yes, ma'am, will do.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Council Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, um, Ms. Carolyn Williams is here to talk about WHAM. If you would allow me, um, to have her say something, and she can kind of give like a high-level overview of what WHAM is all about. Thank you, Ms. Fr-
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so the WHAM program is Women in Advanced Manufacturing, and it's a program that's six months long, is held at Lawson State Community College and the Bessemer Campus. So a lot of people have been asking, what is the program? How does it work? It has two tracks, and it's for people transitioning into new careers, for students who are looking for a different way to make a living, or just for women who are interested in getting into advanced manufacturing. Advanced Manufacturing is one of the top three industries in the state of Alabama. This program is, um, is union-funded, but at the end of the day, the goal is not for the women to start working for the union. The goal is for the women to find jobs in advanced manufacturing. So, at the end of the cohort, um, that's graduating next week from Lawson, there are eight women in the program right now. There are five from the City of Birmingham, three from Jefferson County, and one of them has already been offered a job. There is always going to be a hiring, um, or like a career fair at the graduation, where companies come in to work with these women. They are looking for women to work in advanced manufacturing. And ultimately, the reason why I'm here is to ask you if there are organizations in your communities that are, um, that have women that are looking for ways to make more money and to provide for their families. Then they can text WHAM to, I can give y'all this number later, but the number is seven-seven-zero-eight-zero-zero-one-seven-five-five, and we'll connect with them. There's an open house every Monday at the Lawson Campus, and we do a virtual open house on Thursdays at four PM. So there's a lot of opportunity, we would love to get people engaged. The next cohort starts January ninth, and, um, like I said, it's a fully funded program. There is at no cost to the participants, and the classes are in the evening. Um, there is going to be another class that's offered during the day to make sure that if women have some different schedules and they want to work around their children's schedules and things, then we provide for that as well. Thank y'all for allowing me to speak. If there are any questions, I'll stick around for a minute, I love to answer them, but ultimately, happy holidays, y'all have a great one.
All right, thank you. Council Woods?
Yeah, I'll just add real quick, uh, I, um, had the opportunity to go in and speak to the class that she's referencing when they kicked off six months ago, and so, excited to hear that they, they saw it through, got it done. And I know they were really excited, uh, to start, but like I said, I would just encourage anybody that, um, was interested in trying something new to give that a shot, so, thank you.
All right, great. Um, yeah, one last thing, um, can, thank you, Council Clark, for sharing this with me. Uh, so the, the Ballard House is going to be, um, hosting a holiday salon with Brian Raphael Neighbors, um, on December, Monday, December ninth, at five-thirty PM, uh, at the Ballard House. Brian Neighbors is a, uh, jazz funk, R&B, and gospel musician. And so, again, that's the Ballard House, Monday, December ninth, at five-thirty M, five-thirty PM. Thank you. All right. Council Clark?
That's the same artist that the symphony is going to perform one of his works at the Carver that I mentioned, so.
Nice, nice. All right. And do we have a date on the, the Carver performance?
Yes, so the Symphony Orchestra's performance of one of Brian Neighbors' works will be on December fifth. And that is a ticket, that's a purchase ticket versus the free opportunity at the Ballard House.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, um, finally, I want to thank our officers on duty this morning. As always, we have Officer Cedric Pinkard, who's based here in City Hall. Uh, we also have with us Officer Derek Square and Shannon Jones from West Precinct. Thank you for being with us this morning. With that?
I move forward, adjourned.
All in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned.
And we continue to educate marginalized communities on issues when it comes to breast cancer, prostate cancer, diabetes, cholesterol, any type of disease that affect, um, some people in the South. So it's important, we thank Ms. Brenda Brown and Ms. Brenda Hong, Booz and Buddies, for continually doing these hours of power help forms to help continue to educate those in marginalized communities. So I'm so grateful that I can be a sponsor of this, and, and the goal is to always keep our people, you know, trending in the right way. We learned a lot here, like we learned how to exercise, we learned the size to watch for, so.
There's several symptoms that you need to look out for if you have heart disease or may think you may have some issues with your heart. Um, chest pain is one of the telltale signs, pressure discomfort, um, shortness of breath, even just going short distances. Um, you can have heart failure from that, or even heard of CHF, con- congestive heart failure. Some of the risk factors that just put you at a higher risk of developing some of these things are high blood pressure.
It's just basically, you're just retraining your, your mindset to do something a little different, to be a little bit more healthy.
So breast cancer is a disease that occurs with abnormal cells in the breast tissue, multiply and become tumors. It's one of the most common cancers in women and people sight, and people sight female at birth. But many people also can obtain breast cancer. It's biologically far as to on your mother returning to side, and then it could be on your paternal side. So it can be hereditary. Surgery, treatment, surgery, radiation, chemo, and medication, those are the ways that you can treat breast cancer. It's not as death sentence anymore. We have people now that are living longer, um, with breast cancer. If you catch it and treat it, you can live and, you know, go on with a normal life.
All four of these ladies let you know that everything involves you saying aye. If you want to continue to do well, if you want to continue to be able to get up and down, and if you just want to just feel pretty good.
Anytime that I get a chance to continue to educate people in community, that's what I am hard to do. But once again, thank Ms. Brenda Hong, Brenda Brown, Booz and Buddies, for this great opportunity on tonight. Thank you, Ms. Brenda.